Okay, so what we're gonna do, each member of the board member or school board member will have five minutes to ask questions, make statements. That'll be the first round. It'll give everyone a chance to speak and ask questions. If the question, if the answer to the question is pretty simple, or it doesn't take 15 minutes to give, Chairman Healy said she will gladly, they will give the answer tonight. Otherwise, if it's a, needs a little research, they'll come back to us. So with that said, who wants to be the first Board of Supervisors member to go? And that wrapped up pretty quickly. Ms. Bonkey, thank you, Ms. Bonkey.
Okay, I'll go first. I do have a couple of questions, but I do want to let everybody know that we just received our book five minutes ago, so it was up here when we arrived in this room. So we have not had a chance to digest this information, okay? But I have had some conversations with my school board counterpart, so I just want to confirm some things and then ask a few questions. So I understand that there are certain groups of people that you would like to address within your school board budget, employees, and I understand there's the administrative assistants, where you would like to, that would cost like $500,000 to bring them up to the minimum? No, okay? To the 5%.
So the $500,000 is to try to get them, it's 1.2 million for all of the employees to get them to the minimum of the market for all those classifications that weren't done previously. So those are administrative assistants, administrators, bookkeepers, that whole set of, I think it's 103, 105 positions.
Okay.
So the $500,000 would be an initial start to, you know, a phased approach to moving them to the minimum of the market. Now, the 5% would conceivably move them more towards the market as well.
Okay, alright, so that's a phased approach, starting it this year with about 103 positions?
Correct.
Thank you very much, okay? Also, you all have a plan in your budget to increase substitute pay, autism paras and autism teachers, to try to bring them up and then give them an additional stipend for the work that they do to the tune of about $800,000, roughly.
So the $800,000 that's in the budget is actually, in the past, we've gone over in our substitute lines?
Correct.
So that's actually not the full 800, but I'm gonna say 90% of that roughly, and we can get an exact number, is actually to correct deficits that we've had in our substitute lines over the past several years. So it's offset, it's offsetting some of the, we typically use salary laps and things like that to cover our substitute lines, like if we have a long-term sub that has to fill for a teacher. The vacant teacher position will create vacancy savings, but we then need to take a long-term sub and place him in that classroom. So our sub line's been going over the budget, which is why we increased our salary laps this year as well.
Just to be real clear, there's not in the budget to raise the salaries beyond the 5% that the school board is proposing for staff for those three classifications you mentioned?
Okay, okay. And you do have a salary lapse built into the budget, okay?
Two and a half million dollars.
Two and a half million, okay.
Which was a 50% increase over, was it 100% increase? Half of that is what we had last year, so it would be 100% increase from last year.
Okay. I understand that the middle school principals, you're looking to move them from 10-month employees to 12-month employees, and that cost about $100,000.
Right, so that's, seven of our eight middle schools have three, have a principal and two assistant principals. One is already 12 months, one is 10 months, and we moved that 10 months to a 12 month.
Okay.
So that's not the principals, the principals are 12 months.
It's the assistant principals.
One of the two assistant principals.
Right, right. Okay, and then Sarah addressed the nurses. The nurses, to bring them up to the median of the market is a quarter of a million dollars, roughly?
The nurses have been on, I'm not exactly sure what scale they've been on, and we're trying to move them onto the teacher scale, so they would be getting paid the same as what a teacher with the same amount of experience would get. And this is because they're registered nurses.
Correct, okay, and that isn't a phased in, that would address that?
My understanding from Ms. Healy was that we started phasing this in many years ago, and we got, it was supposed to be three phases, we did two of those phases and then we stopped, and so what we're trying to do is finish that phased approach this year.
And then you also have a tranche of about $700,000 for those teachers that are at the 13-year mark and greater, okay? And is that 13 through all of our steps?
It's 13, exactly, 13 and above.
13 and above, okay. And where would we be raising them to?
So all staff, all teachers would get 5%, they would get 5% plus an additional 1%.
Plus an additional 1%, okay. Alright, thank you.
Ms. Healy, you have someone from your board that wants to speak?
Any volunteers?
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Thank you again for having the school board at this joint session. We've made considerable progress working and collaborating as a team. I've had the pleasure getting to know several of you personally. We care for our staff by respecting and by giving them a decent salary with pay increases to sustain themselves and their families. Our workforce is getting younger, and if they do not have a need to stay, they may leave. Additionally, some of our seasoned teachers state that if it was not for their spouse or partner, they would be unable to afford their home. We need to continuously attract, develop, and retain staff. That is why I advocate for 5% across the board, for all staff as well as an additional 1% pay increase for our teachers 13 years and above to bring them to market. So we can compete with our Prince William, Pennsylvania schools, who may no, make no excuses for picking off our staff, not only our teachers and principals, but also administrators and our bus drivers. We cannot operate only with teachers. As we all know, that it takes a village to raise a child, and this holds true for our school system. What a small price to pay for our precious resources. The county knows well about growth, and that we are now the third fastest-growing county surpassing Prince William. This growth is welcomed, but we also need to ensure that we have enough room in our schools for incoming students, therefore enough teachers and staff. The students are becoming more and more diverse culturally as well as racially. Moving students from one part of the county to another does not solve the problem of diversity and infusion of culture. It is through the staff, especially teachers that spend the quality time teaching our childrens, need to begin to look like the student population they serve, especially in Garrisonville. It is not by chance that Dr. Kizner was chosen to help with this change while moving the school system to nurture and care for our students, so they can achieve excellence in education, and to recruit, retain, and develop our staff and teachers. We need to continue to talk about security, task force, and school resource officers, but more importantly, we have an urgent need for counselors, social workers, and other support positions, not only to achieve compliance and to meet required staffing standards, but with an ever-increasing racially and culturally diverse population, we need the right resources. We need to educate the staff, we have to understand the sensitivities behind culture and diversity. In turn, I hope this will lead to a reduction in discipline disparities of students with disabilities, of different culture or race, reduce the gap between the have and have-nots, and eventually increase in equity and excellence in our education system for all students, not just for some. I yield the rest of my thanks.
Thank you. Any board member? Chad?
Thanks for the presentation, Dr. Chase. And I'm gonna cut right to the Chase right now, if I can use your name in vain. I'm on board with the SEAs' position of the 5% increase for all. Now, I've noticed that your budgets, both Dr. Kizner's budget and then the school board's approved budget, vary a little bit from, deviated a little bit from that 5% for all. And I'm also advocating for a 5% parity pay raise for all county employees to go along with that. I'd like both sides of the street to get the same raises every year. So, having said that, Dr. Kizner's budget included, I think, just a 3% pay raise for some administrators. It also, then the school board's budget included the extra 1% for the teachers 13 and over. So, my question is this, because to get to the 5%, the numbers that I'm coming up with here would cost, on the county side, an additional 1.6 million, which is about a penny on the tax rate, almost exactly, 1.6 million. For the schools, to get to 5%, 5% for all, not 3% for some, not 6% for some, but 5% across the board, would, I'm told, would cost about $4.4 million additional, above and beyond what your budgets have for your employees, okay? So the two of those equal, 4.4 and 1.6 is $6 million. I'm pretty sure my math's good on that, just even in my head. So, to do that, we would be looking at, and if we cut nothing else out of your budget or our budget, then we'd be looking at approximately, what, a 3.5% increase in real estate taxes, go to 102.5 or something like that, I think. Is it two and a half or three and a half?
3.5.
3.5, okay. So, here's my question, are my numbers correct in terms of your side of the street? Let me ask it direct, okay? Dr. Kizner, how much of an increase in funding do we, the county, need to provide for all school employees to get that 5%? And not taking anything else out of the budget at this point, but knowing full well that some accommodations may have to be made depending on what we can arrive at. I would just, if you can't get it right now, I understand, but that would be a really good number to have when we're setting the tax rate tonight.
Okay, so a 5, if I understand the question correctly, a 5% for all staff?
Across the board, yes.
Across the board, for, for the school side?
Yes.
Would be $10,666,861.
Okay, and what was the, the budgeted raise in that category?
Well, that's what the school board adopted.
Do you mean the county administrators?
No, the school, the school board adopted the 5% for some and the 6% for some.
So the additional 1% that they, so just for the 5%, it's the number I just stated, the additional 1% was around $797,000 above that.
Okay. Now, so I think that still goes along with the calculations, and the additional money that we could provide to you would guarantee that. Is your priority gonna be to make sure that that number gets taken care of first and not some other? Understand that, you know, we maybe have to sacrifice positions, or programs, or buildings, or something else, but I just need a warm fuzzy on, if we transfer X amount, we can get everybody a 5% raise.
I would, my one caveat would just be the change in the SOQs for counselors, so we don't have the option of not providing those counselors. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I know you have to provide a certain number, but I thought the original budgets were over and above that.
Sure, yeah, but what I'm saying is that we'll get from, we'll get from the state 65% of the salaries for the SOQ counselors, and then we have to come up with the other 35%. So that's, that's not a choice for us, so.
Yeah, and really, that's, that's noise in the budget today.
I would hope so, but I just, just wanted to be upfront.
Right, okay. And I looked at any of the reduction pages, you know, but were, are there any reductions or eliminations of programs, or have anywhere any considered that you have?
Well, again, you started off by saying, why did I, oh, you didn't ask the question, but you did make an accurate statement, that, not that I didn't not want to give our administrators 5%, but I was also aware that I, before I presented the budget to the school board, I already reduced 40 positions that were recommended to me by building level and other central, and central office positions. So, I guess I'm just gonna, it's obviously the school board's determination based on what is allocated to them. I do know that another goal that we have, which can never be minimized, is to make sure our students are learning to high levels and there's equity. And we are running in certain, definitely at the middle school, but in certain other areas, what I would say, and I don't use this word or this phrase a lot, very large class sizes. And in order to reduce that, that does require additional staff, and also, as already as Dr. Chase presented, we're anticipating 400 additional students. So we're trying to get our class sizes lower, and also meeting the needs of those additional students, I would say it goes beyond just the standards of quality positions that we're being faced with the school counselors, that we, you know, this would just be my recommendation to the school board, that we still need to have positions to meet the needs of our students in the classroom.
And I'd like to add, there may be other mandated positions that we have to fill. Traditionally, special education is one, with the, you saw the rising numbers that Dr. Chase presented of our, our special needs, special ed population, and we are required by law, you know, to meet those needs regardless of the, the cost. And particularly in the, you know, the staffing areas, that is a challenge. So, to the extent that we have federal and state mandates, you all know about the preschool, you helped us out there by getting the North Star facility and renovating it, but there are more and more demands being placed on us that are not funded, not funded by the state or the federal government. So we are going to be required to meet those demands. But I think it's very clear from the, the action of the school board, that the school board is committed, you know, to, you know, trying to give our staff a fair compensation. And right now, it's not, unfortunately.
Well, and I'm hoping that's a consideration in your budget formulations, I'm assuming there's not gonna be a lot of, you know, last-minute throw-ins here.
No, it's there, but you, I think you asked a question, you know, can you assure me we're gonna use this money for raises? I can tell you, everyone wants to give the raises, there was not one dissent in that. But we're going to have to look at all the demands on the school system from, you know, outside requirements, such as the, you know, federal and state regulations that we have to meet.
Yeah, basically, I'm just saying, is your, is your priority the raises for the employees? Because too many times in the past, it hasn't been quite there, to the point that, you know, we've had extra money for other things, and it didn't get spent, and it could have been spent on salaries. And so I don't want that to happen again. I want to know that, you know, the priority is that, we can't set people's salaries. You know, all the teachers and employees need to know, excuse me, out there, everyone, all the employees need to know that the Board of Supervisors does not set the school employee's salaries, and that's something not everybody understands. You know, you have a framework in your $300 million budget that allows you some latitude. Now, not a lot, understand you've got, what, 85% is employee cost, and so I get it. But I just think, you know, as long as you're, you know, taking it, you know, the way you prioritize it, you can make this happen, because I think in the past, we, there's been some neglect on employees. And, you know, just like on this side of the street, same thing, you know, but I think employees are our most valuable asset right now. I mean, you have a job to educate our children, and that's the most important thing, but people who do that are also, you know, very much a part of this equation.
So, Mr. Cavali, oh, is that the five minutes?
Yeah, Ms. Healy, you have a school board member that wants to speak? I'm assuming, Ms. Decatur?
Good timing. So, well, I'll just start by saying thank you, guys. I truly, truly do appreciate your partnership and your continued advocacy for our kids, who, by the way, this will be the last budget season before, it's also my children. So, but I was actually gonna touch on that, and that's really all I had to say, I just, I just wanted to say thank you. And also, Dr. Chase, thank you for, for spending so much time. I hope you guys found that to be as to the point as I did, you did a great job, Dr. Chase. And I'll just touch on, on your kind of question, because I think I remember and I understand where it's coming from. In my first budget season on the board, we, we went through this process, and then we, you know, got our allocation, and there were certain mandates, and we did cut that 2.5%. And I don't remember at the time where, you know, what happened, or how much we were able to give. But in my second year, I remember last budget season, we worked really closely, and we were able to really hone in on what really are the mandates, what is that exact number that you need for the mandates plus the 2.5%? And, okay, and by the way, then, let's make sure that, once that's funded, that 2.5% goes where we said it was gonna go. And we were able to accomplish that by working so closely together. So we want to continue that into this year, but also I am hoping that this year we don't say, well, what are the mandates plus the 5%, and we're gonna give you that and make sure it happens, because there's really a lot more that we need to do, over and above the mandates for our kids and our teachers, and you guys heard the presentation and you get the point. But I am hoping that we don't just stick to, what is that bottom dollar plus the 5% and we fund that. So I, I hope we can move past that this year, because each year we've just made a little bit more progress, and I've so, so appreciated that. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you for coming. First, I've heard from people who were involved in the budget and going to the workshops and whatnot, that this budget process was extremely transparent and was very clear. I think that goes to the leadership from Dr. Kizner and the excellent people he has on his team, Mr. Fulmer, Brenda O'Brien and their team, and their professionalism. And so that is very much appreciated. I am disappointed that I didn't get to spend my Saturday evening going through this since the Glow Dance was canceled. And so I wasn't out dancing on a gym floor, but, so it would be nice to have this so that we can look at it in a timelier fashion. One of the things that I just want to say that I'm very thrilled about is the fact that in the budget is the fire training class, which is vitally important to this county. When I do ride-alongs and I talk to our volunteers and our paid fire staff, they all comment that this program in the past was vital and necessary. So I hope that as this moves along, that your, your board has as much of a commitment to this program as we do, because this is career education and it helps with volunteers. And by, by having people who know the county, it helps us a great deal, and by having people who volunteer, that frees up money elsewhere that might be spent in an area that you might like. So I thank you. There's three things, anybody who knows me, I don't expect answers immediately. People in my building, it freaks them out, people in this building, it freaks them out. I don't, you know, I expect, I don't make people jump. Ms. Bonkey talked about the administrative assistance, and I was very big on this last year. I know that you all spent time on the study, I don't know if it'll be in here, but if we can get the details of that study and, you know, where it was, so that those of us who, who know many of these people can see, I hear that there's a great plan in place to go at that, but it'd be nice to be able to see the meat of that. On the paras issue, I'd still hear from paras in different buildings about a discrepancy, that certain paras got different pay raises than others last year, and so I just would, at some point, if you, and again, you don't have to do this at the second, but I'm just curious as to how that happened and what, you know, if that's being addressed, because one would think, I started as a paraprofessional in a special ed classroom way back in the Stone Age, and so I understand not often they're very low-paid individuals, so it just would be nice to see some equity and understand that. One of the things that was raised numerous times, at least last year and I think from other years, is a clear delineation of one-time expenses versus continuing expenses, and it may well be in here. I know it was in our budget, Mr. Foley and his team were very good at making it clear this is a one-time expense. So if we can get that, if it's not already in here, if we can get that understanding, that would make it a lot easier for you. Go ahead.
Mr. Cohen, thank you very much for giving us the questions. So just real quickly, we will send you, it's on our website, but I'm beginning to understand that hard copies we still like. So, the compensation study is on our website, we will get each of the Board of Supervisors a copy of the, of that study. April, early April, the FAB committee is going to get the first recommendations on how we could look at that compensation study and recommendations to the school board. So we're not there yet, okay? And the third one, we'll get back to you, okay?
And I appreciate that. And, you know, last year, which was my first budget year, between my going through the budget and other people going through the budget, there was over three pages worth of questions and whatnot, and I didn't get to say anything to Chris ahead of time, but, you know, this year it was less than a page, and there's compliments on the half of the page. So, and I attribute that to your leadership and to the team. I know Chris, I know Brenda, I know a lot of the people over there, and they're very professional, so I, I just want to make sure that you realize that, you know, it's understood, that is aspect, getting this early would have been nice too, but I understand how the process works. Thank you.
That's it?
One of the things I was gonna talk about, so that worked out great. Again, thank you to Dr. Chase, and thank you for having this discussion, and I think one of the things that was talked about, that was addressed, is the cooperative spirit and that we need to go forward with the plan. And so I just wanted to make some observations. After reviewing, I did attend Administrator Foley's presentation of your all's budget, and I'm struck by the fact that both of our budgets are reacting to similar market forces. First, Stafford has become Northern Virginia in terms of its population growth, its demographics. I think that we're all struggling with that Northern Virginia salaries must be provided in Stafford County and school employees, county employees, in order to remain competitive and to attract and retain the best and brightest employees who can live here in Stafford County and work here. The changing demographics and increasing needs of our population require additional services and employees to meet these needs. Unmet needs may violate specific mandates and lead to further issues within our community, and I mean that on both sides. Our children, thank you, Administrator Foley, for this, make up 20% of our population. So Stafford is a family place, and our services and budgets must reflect that reality. National trends regarding low pay and small candidate pools for teachers, sheriff's deputies, fire and rescue further exacerbate the feeling that Stafford could be falling behind. As a school board member, of course, getting our teachers and all staff to national levels for salary is critical, especially as our population continues to increase, and I think the request of the school board is for the 5% is a first step, but I don't believe it is the only step. I would be remiss, though, if I didn't state that the school budget cannot only be salaries going a little bit, I know to the concerns that I hear, but needed new positions are gonna be required to meet the needs of our staff. And again, one of the things many of you know, increasing class sizes so that every dollar can go to salaries is very difficult for me and will be unacceptable to me. I think we also have to, investment in new infrastructure is also critical. I think both boards need to work together to start the process of identifying the site for high school number six and to get rolling with this project. The school board set aside, I think it was $100,000 three years ago, to perform studies on seeking land for the high school. I think it's time for us to build on that investment. Investment in programs, Mr. Cohen and I must be thinking along the same lines, that meet the needs of our students and our community should be supported. I support the introduction of the firefighting class to be offered at our high schools. It's my understanding that over 50 students have expressed an interest. Chief Cardelo has run a school program in his prior jurisdiction, and I would love to build on his expertise. This course wouldn't just benefit our students, it would benefit our community as we train them to fill these needed positions here and around the nation, but I would certainly hope they would stay here. I don't want to lose sight of school security officers and that discussion. I am very supportive of us. I am very supportive of us looking in the mental health areas and stuff, but I do think we, as we move forward, we need to still not lose sight of some of those security mandates, and I believe we are having a security audit done, and I hope that's a dialogue we will have with our, with you all. Finally, I hope, as elected officials, we can work together to address these challenges. We're not going to fix these issues overnight or in one or two budget sessions. And I think we have to be real, and I think we have to tell our constituencies that. I really would love us to do some kind of broad town hall meetings to talk to our population and tell them and say what the issues are. Most of you know I would love a county campaign to do a Buy Stafford, so we can keep as many tax dollars here in Stafford. And I guess just the last point is, the school budget is employee-salary focused. I mean, I think that's what everybody talks about. But I would say that salaries is an investment in our children. We want the best employees to give their best efforts to the best resource we have, which is our kids. I would ask that we work together to provide adequate compensation and work life for all our employees here in Stafford, so that our children have the benefit of the best teaching and school experience. But, one thing I think both our budgets show, the investment is needed now. Our children and our citizens can't wait.
Okay, on the board side, Ms. Dudenheffer, Ms. Mauer, raise your hand. Go for it.
This is not going to be easy, but I just have a few questions.
She's not contagious.
I'm not contagious. I'm on antibiotics. I tested negative for the flu. So, I just, let me put that out there right now. A couple of things, the most important page in this budget for me is page number 25. That's the instruction page, classroom instruction specifically. And I don't expect to get your math tonight, but if you can send me a breakout of the math on the first line item, which is salaries for teachers. So, we're talking about a 6% increase. I know that we're switching out, you know, older teachers and younger teachers. I get all of that. I also get the fact that you're building in 2.5 million in salary labs. I'm assuming that's across the board and not just in this line item. But it strikes me a little bit that we're looking at a five, at some point, 6% increase plus 35 additional positions, and I only see a 3.9% increase to the tune of $3.9 million. So, if you can kind of give me a breakdown, not tonight, of the additions and subtractions on that, because in your entire budget, this is the number-one most important line item for me to see. Secondly, I see a 60% increase in instructional supplies, and that's to the tune of almost $1 million. It's $800,000 also in this classroom instruction, so I'd like to get a little bit more on that. The other number that struck out at me was the $1.8 million increase in the retirement for VRS. And so, that's a 10% increase, and maybe I missed it in here, that there was some sort of increase that had a budget hit, but a 10% increase is, it kind of strikes me, and I didn't go through every other page. Again, most important page in the budget. Last thing I want to ask about is, and you might know this off the top of your head, how many kids were estimated for the ADM last year, and how many did we get? Do you know that one off the top of your head? What was the delta, actually? More or less?
Yeah, if you give me a minute. So, we had 28, 9, 34 last, is budgeted for FY19, so the year that we're currently in.
28, 9, 44. Okay, thank you.
Because, so that number obviously fluctuates. We don't have a true ADM number yet, and the state is based on ADM, used the state's ADM number last year.
So, what, so the state has not given your final funding for the ADM for 19?
No, we have to, yeah, we have to wait until our March 31 submission.
Okay.
And then they calculate it, and then we get our final funding for FY19. But I can give you a couple of numbers for what our student enrollment was, which is different from ADM, because it can change on a daily basis. So, our September 30 enrollment was 28, 905.
Okay.
Our November 30 enrollment was 29, 011.
Okay.
And our January 31 enrollment was 29, 149.
Okay. Perfect. And then just a couple more questions. And again, I'm not expecting answers tonight. On the purchasing procurement, I see reorganization and the addition of two positions with an increased contribution to central purchasing. I understand that. Is this in coordination with our procurement office? Are we working hand-in-hand on that? Or are you saying you need two additional people to meet county requirements?
It's in coordination.
Okay, wonderful. And a couple of things that I want to say finally. Fantastic job, Dr. Chase. You really did a great job. Big difference between this budget and the last budget. The hyperbole, there was a lot less hyperbole. And I greatly appreciate that, because it makes it a lot easier to have a more open and honest conversation than when I get told there's, you know, 50 mandated positions, and it's a little bit hyperbole on that from last year. So, I want to thank you for that, because it makes it a lot easier for me to have an open and honest dialogue and not get kind of spun up on semantics. So, I don't think that's all I've got, because if I speak anymore, I'm going to go into a coughing fit, and nobody wants that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Volunteers?
I did plenty of talking already, so I'm yielding my time to others.
Mr. McCosker.
Thank you. Looks like I'm not the only one coughing tonight, but I don't have, I don't, I'm not sick. So, first of all, thank you so much, Chairman Snellings, for, and your team, for putting this together and actually, you know, putting some thought behind how this process will go. I think this is probably one of the best processes, joint process, that I've seen in my seven years here. So, thank you. Also, Dr. Chase, thank you so much for that great brief, you know, right to the point, facts only, as Ms. Mauer said, and I agree with Ms. Mauer 100%. And that also extends to the team, to the finance team, for giving you the data to support that with Dr. Kizner, and I really appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. Kizner, and Mr. Foley, for getting the team together. So, the bottom line up front, so the bluff is that, you know, the staff put together and the school board approved the budget, that we're asking for a local increase of 8.7. I think, Jack, that's what you were talking about, 8.7, to fully fund the 5% raises across the board, along with the 1%, along with the nurse scale adjustment, along with the new positions, and some other things. So, that's kind of a number. That's the, that's the nirvana for the school board, and I think for our team that work in the, work in the buildings every day, at the tip of the spear with our students and making them productive citizens. And then it kind of decrements back from there, I think. Mr. Cavalier talked about, you know, what about just 5%? And then have us figure out the rest of the stuff. That's going to be difficult. The school board's going to assume risk with the mandatory positions, with the growth positions, with, and then we'll have to put aside those paraprofessionals, the nursing improvements, and the bus driver improvements. And we've been incrementally trying to help them every year, to get them up to the beginning of the market, as you heard during the brief. So, I see the, I see the number one right up front, the number one, 8.7 is the number, and then it's something less, but I think, I think that 5% pay raise has to stick on our side, and I think, and I would appreciate it if it stuck on your side. We would have to give you a number. It would be something between the 8.7 and 3.7 proposed, of course, but I think that's the lowest we can go, I think, on our side, to keep our employees. We're losing hundreds of employees a year. I'll tell you, we've looked across the nation, and you can see on TV the teacher strikes. You know, that, we say that in the military, "Oh, that'll never happen here." Are you sure about that? Gosh, would that be terrible, right? If we just had a strike and, you know, the teachers are, and the support personnel in our schools, and the leaders in our schools are, the reason our kids are doing so well and our schools are staying accredited is because they're working really hard, and they're dedicated to their job. But even those of us who are either government contractors, state employees, military, we all expect that yearly bump, that yearly increase, to keep with the cost of living and other things like that, that make life nice, when you're a professional with a four-year degree that you've worked hard for, and to raise a family, right? So, you know, I really want you all to think about that, and I know it's not palatable all the time to say, "Hey, you know, it's going to be a 3.55% tax increase for the 5%, and then it's going to be a 3.14 tax increase for the 3% and the 5%." But I think we're really at a turning point here, and it's up to us which way this is going to go. Whether Duane's gone in a couple of months to go pursue other things, right, in my job, or some of you have gone, or you'll stay with me, we really have to turn this ship around when it comes to the compensation of the employees. Because there's going to become a time when the norm is, and it's starting to get that way with, the norm is, "I'm going north. I will endure 95 for an extra 25 minutes each way, if it's going to mean that we're getting that much more money." So, I think, I think none of us want that. I think we, I think we want to do the right thing by, by making sure we're paying our employees. And I'm 100% behind that, even if, even if it's the low case, the worst-case scenario is, you all increase the tax enough to cover the 5%, which is probably somewhere around a $6 million give, or a 5.9, or somewhere around there, if I'm doing my rough, rough math, right? And you put it in a resolution, you send it over to us, right? And you say, "Hey, we did our job. The school board, you need to do yours." And I understand Mrs. Healy's been around forever, and she's, she's an expert, right? Right? I'm not trying to be mean about that.
Are you commenting on my age, Mr. McCosker?
No, no, I did not. Did I say, did I say anything with the A-word? I did not say the A-word. My, my, well, they asked me, "How can you be 50, how can you be 55 with no wrinkles? Fat." So, anyway, I think, I think that's it. I think 8.7, and I think, I think the 5% is the low, the lowest I think we want to go. Thanks.
Ms. Shelton.
Thank you. I have several questions that I want to ask, and I want to, first of all, I want to say that we talk about all these different numbers, and I would think across our, not our country, we do not pay teachers, educators enough, period. So, we could, like, slice and dice the numbers and try to figure out what that's going to be and what it's going to look like, but the bottom line is, we absolutely do not. And so, my interest is, what is our priority? And so, why I'm asking that is because we have a really huge budget. We have the ability to be able to go and pay people these things, but we have to make, in my opinion, no, not in my opinion, by God, we have to make better decisions about how we spend our money. For example, I know that we, we, the county, and I'm talking, and I include the school board in that, we, the county, had a study that was done, looking at the programs in Stafford County public schools, to see what was the value of those particular programs, which ones could we drop. I still haven't seen that, and I think it's important for us to know, and for our constituents to know, everyone wants to know, where's the value of these particular programs? And I haven't seen that. So, that's one question. It's like, what programs are not efficient? What are we going to drop? All right? The second thing I wanted to talk to, and you know, and I think several of you guys have talked about, the behavioral issues that we have within every school system, every school system. And so, we've had significant behavioral issues that we tried to address, but, and we talked about it in percentages. You guys go to all kinds of conferences. What are we going to do about that in our budget? And so, I don't see, and maybe because I had just got the book, too, but I don't see the uptick on what, what are we doing as a long-term strategy to improve that? Where are our behavior analysts? Where are the behavior specialists, or less-than-BAs? I'm not quite sure what that name is. Where are these people? Because, you know, okay, I'll look at it in a minute. That's not the same as a counselor. No, it's not. Okay. I was going to say, I thought you pointed counselor. I'm like, all right, sorry, didn't mean to get into, I'm like, no, not counselors. Anyway, so, back to, that is a really significant issue. So, let's just go back and talk to it. You educators know this. If we don't get in front of this, these problems, when these children are in kindergarten going forward, they become a society problem. So, by us spending the money and doing things up front, we're going to get that. So, my question to you guys is, where in the budget are we looking at it, not just as an offset, but as a strategy to be able to improve the quality of life, not just for the students in the room, but all the students that have the problem, but how that impacts negatively the other students, and the amount of time that a teacher has to do, taking away from that, to deal with those particular problems? So, that's the second question. The third question, well, actually, that kind of ties into it, but when you talk about the teacher retention, the governor had a teacher retention summit, and he did that because that's across the Commonwealth. So, I appreciate the concern and looking at it, what it is for Stafford County, but that's across all counties. Everywhere has that problem. Everywhere has the problem of losing the one-year student, or the teachers, and up to four years. I think it's like 50% of the teachers from this study, yeah, 50% of the teachers from this particular study, which I can share with you, left in four years. Now, that's a big deal, and that has an impact on you. And I feel sorry for you guys, because you have to resolve it. And so, the reason I'm asking the question about this particular summit, I want you to think about, not just giving me the information, this is what's going on here, but what are you doing as a board? What are you doing to improve the retention, knowing that it's really not about the money? And so, and why I'm saying it's not really about the money, because I look at, and this really bothers me, is that we have, we're spending, what was it I heard today? A million dollars for teachers that are coming in from out of the county and bringing their students in? And so, I'm going to go, where is our priority again? Is our priority, that's a million dollars. Is that, I mean, I want to do everything, right? And so, where is our priority? Is that priority to, because that's a, what, five, half a percent, if you will, for a teacher raise? I want to do it. I get it. I think it's great, but I'd really like to see you guys come back to and say, "These are the programs that we think are valuable. These are the programs that we could fund." If you come to any of our work sessions, just like yours, we have those very hard discussions on the board supervisors, because we know we can't do everything we need to. We also have our mandates. We have things that we have to do, just like you guys. So, our bottom line has got some line, and I'm drawing an imaginary line here. There's a point when you go, "I really want to do all these things, but this is as far as I can go." So, I'm interested in looking at what programs that we can, that drop down to the bottom. You could share with me what, why one is more important than the other, whatever you guys want to do, but I'm really interested in seeing that we provide the funding for all our educators, all the people that we talked about today, that by God deserve it, because that's our future, but that offset has to come from savings at other places, not just continuing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Mr. Duden, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman and the school board member want to?
Dr. Chase, would you like to issue some personal comments? I mean, I know you're making the presentation on behalf of the board, but you're welcome to, if you want to pass, that's fine, too.
I think I'm going to pass, but thank you, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that leaves me, right?
Okay, well, I wouldn't say I've been here forever, but it has been a long time. I know many of you from the old days. I think one year, maybe about, what, 15 or more years ago, Mr. Cavalier and I were chairman, and we got fully funded. The only budget that I recall where we were fully funded. But, you know, it took a lot of working together and compromise, and I think we're in that direction. direction right now. I mean, what I see here today, thank you, Mr. Snellings, is rare. I mean, we are having a dialogue and we're actually listening to each other. I mean, usually, you know, we come in with our body armor, you know, ready to be abused. I mean, and you all know, who have been here in the past, know what I'm talking about, but that's not where we are today. So, that's a positive thing. I mean, we're in a good place, and it's not just positive for us, it's positive for Stafford community. I mean, we started out, you know, the title of our budget presentation is Investing in Stafford's Future: Creating a Journey of Excellence for All. We have been excellent in the past. We're not at that level of excellence right now, and as you see, there's been a lot of changes for us and a lot more challenges for us, not just in the populations, but in the requirements and the mandates and everything that's going on. But the bottom line is, is when we invest in our schools, we are investing in our community. Because we all know people come to Stafford because of the schools, or at least that was what they've said in the past. We want that to continue, and we can't do it without funding. We recognize, and I think, you know, we've all said, we recognize your responsibilities and the choices you have to make, but I think you also recognize ours, that we are the advocates for the school system. We are the advocates for those 20,000 students, children in this community, we're the advocates for their parents. I think you all may have heard that we're having a redistricting. The important thing about that, though, is I haven't had one person come and say, please move me out of my school. I want to move. The parents are coming to us and saying, I love my school, I don't want to move. You know, we love our teachers, we love the community there. So, that is a tribute to our staff, to our teachers, our administrators, the whole school. But we do have a challenge, and the challenge is going to be to retain the staff we have and to continue to attract staff in the future. And Ms. Shelton mentioned the, you know, the 50% leaving in four years. That's nationwide. That's not just here. But if somebody leaves us, they're not, they're going to go somewhere they can make more. They're not going to leave somewhere they're making a lot more money to come here, unless perhaps a spouse got a job close by or there was a reason to move to Stafford. So, we need to invest in our staff, and I think the 5% across the board is something that we're all, you know, committed to. However, you know, as has been mentioned, you know, we're going to have to make other commitments as well. I mean, we can't avoid the mandates. We can't, in good conscience, have huge classes. That's not going to help anybody. That's not going to help a teacher to give them a 5% raise and say, oh, by the way, you're going to have a lot more students there, because that's just going to put more stress on them. So, we're going to, you know, we have to balance, but I think if we can continue to work together, to have a plan, to have a roadmap, that if we can do something this year, what can we do next year and the year after that, regardless of who is sitting, you know, in our seats or perhaps yours, at least there could be a vision for the schools. I mean, you have a vision for the county, and you've done an amazing job with what you've done with the bond grading, you know, with the position that Stafford's in now. That's thanks to the vision of the board supervisors and the work and commitment that you put into that. And I would just ask that you commit to a partnership with the schools to move forward, and if we can get the 5% this year, that would be a start, but it's, as Ms. Young and others have said, it's not going to end there. You know, this is a journey. I would just like to address Ms. Shelton's question about the programs, because we do talk about our programs, and it's difficult because every program meets a need. And Mr. Cohen commented on the firefighting program. He's glad we put it in. Well, that was a struggle. That was a struggle on the board to consider the cost to us, even though you all offered graciously to fund half of that, there's a cost to us. Do we add this program for approximately, what is it, about 140,000 on our side, more or less, that will, you know, accommodate 50 students with a great need for it and be of value, or do we spend that money somewhere else? So, this year, you know, the board put it in. Last year, the board couldn't justify the expense. So, and I know you say, well, you're going the wrong way, you're adding. We do need to look, but if you look at our programs, they all meet needs, and I don't know personally, you know, how I could say, cut this and not that because, you know, these children need this and these children grow. That's part of the value, the beauty of Stafford County schools is that we do meet so many children's needs. So, I'm probably over my time. I apologize.
You're fine. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Duden.
Whoa, to be last. I've got a unique perspective on where we are and where we can go, because I did this for six years and then I did it for four years down in Richmond. And I can tell you, you know, you wouldn't like the way the sausage is made down in Richmond and how this works. It's so easy for them to just say, eh, we're going to give you this amount per ADM, and there's no one that's going to sit in a room like this and talk to you about how, you know, how the funding is and what happens. They, you know, they, that's just not part of their mechanism for how they get to where they want to go. In fact, there's only a few people in that whole body down there who actually have a say in what happens. Most of the people don't even get a look at the budget until almost the very end, and it's pretty sad. So, that weight of them ignoring their responsibilities falls directly on us, and it's, that's always, it's always bothered me because whatever the difference, if you look at SOQ, no school system that I know of could run a quality school system on what the state says we need to run a school system on. And we would, you know, we would be woefully understaffed, we would be woefully underprogrammed, everything would be in a problem. So, there isn't a person at this table who I don't respect and have had working relationships. If I drank, I could say we could go have a beer together. I'd feel very comfortable doing it, although I don't, so. But whatever, we'll go have a Coke, like, you know. Trish and I go back a long, long way. Jack and I were on the board in 2006. I mean, and really, the congeniality is better, but the process and everything we're dealing with is almost the same as it was in 2006 when I first got here. And I appreciate the congeniality, but the difference is, is you guys have a single focus and we have a broad, broad base of a focus, and it becomes very difficult. We raised taxes three cents last year to fund a pay raise for the teachers. That was pretty much unprecedented. I made the case for the 3% pay raise, and the money didn't get allocated the way that I had desired that it gets allocated. And now, we're talking about another tax increase in order to afford this. I mean, there's only two ways to get there, is to raise taxes or cut. And Ms. Shelton, I think, did a great job of talking about the cutting side, but the raising taxes side is something we can't, we can't ignore the complexity that is associated with that. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not as easy as, well, we want to have the best schools, so let's raise taxes. We have people on fixed incomes, you know? I'm on a fixed income. You know, I get rich off of this job, but other than that, I'm in, you know, I'm in good shape. So, we raised taxes three cents last year in order to meet what we're trying to do. We're talking about a four cent tax increase this time, and nowhere has anyone said, what's next year? And what's the year after that? We're trying to do a five-year budget. That's something Tom Foley brought with him. It's an outstanding concept because we, you know, we know, okay, if I do this this year, it affects what we do next year. Nothing here tells me what happens. Does anyone believe we could sustain raising taxes four cents every year forever? I mean, we can't get there. So, to me, this is not the best time in the world to be raising taxes again, and I, you know, I won't be able to support that going forward. Next year, we do reassessments. I mean, you know, so the county's growing, prices are, houses are increasing dramatically, and, you know, we can, personally, we can see where that takes us. But at this point, I don't see, we have responsibilities. I can tell you, schools are important to me. My children went to schools here. I have grandchildren, and, you know, I understand the importance of education, but I also believe trans, we have other problems that are as important right now. Well, you know, you've got to be able to get from school to school. We have kids in school buses that are on unsafe roads that get there, they're lucky if they get to school, you know, if you want to ask my opinion. And we, you know how much money we're spending on that? Virtually nothing. We are totally ignoring one problem and are addressing only one problem. So, I think it's our responsibility to be, we have to get above the single focus and look at this umbrella that is Stafford County. We have to look at sheriff's deputies. Almost everything we're saying today about school teachers also applies to our sheriff's deputies. You know, we're losing them. They're going up north. They're going to work for the federal government, and, I mean, they make more, they're in the, you know, the little sheriff, little police departments up there that run the mall. I mean, you know, just the various things like that. We're trying to grow a quality fire and rescue department. That hasn't been easy. When I first came on the board, we had one full-time fire and rescue personnel, and now we have almost 160. But with the growth, just like with schools, we have to grow the number of paramedics we have, the number of firefighters we have, the number of sheriff's deputies we have. Right now, we're at a point where we have, in the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, he has the same number of prosecutors now that he had in 2006. We have an increase in the number of prosecutors that he has. That, we can't sustain that. You know, we're overcrowding over here in the courthouse. So, I mean, it all overflows into our capital improvement side of the house. So, I wish I could say that, you know, boy, you know, we're going to throw you over that, and maybe we will. I mean, I can't speak for my brethren up here on this side of the aisle, but to me, this year is not a year that I'm going to be able to support a tax increase, and we're going to all have to tighten our budget, tighten our belt and move forward the best we can. But I think that at some point, we need to sit down in the off-budget cycle and talk about a five-year plan or whatever. Even if it was just next year, somebody told me, Mark, we're not coming after a, we're not going to come after a big pay raise next year, we're going to handle just growth. And I don't, does anyone at this table believe that that's going to be the case? I don't think anyone would agree that that's going to be the case. So, it scares me to even consider a tax increase this year without knowing what is coming at me next year and the year after. So, we have to have a plan. I think we ought to have some discussions, just like we're having now, to talk about how we concurrently have a plan moving forward, not just a single year. This doesn't help us to just do this year. Gets us, gets us to May, and then we start all over again. We still have all the same problems. We're not solving our long-term problems. So, I get told that I hate kids. I mean, I've been told, called every name and thing in the book. I don't like children, you know, I must beat my grandchildren, I don't know, but it's, that is absolutely not the case. I just feel a responsibility to the overall picture of what makes Stafford County a good community, and there are a lot of moving parts. So, but thank you, guys. You know, the congeniality is much better. I wish you could have, most of you could have been there at the first school board meeting. A meeting like this I went to, and it was like, I thought, well, certain people wouldn't even come in the room, and I thought that the others were going to throw stuff at each other across the table.
Okay, we've, I think everybody's had a chance to speak. We're going to have a hard stop at 6:45, and we have a board meeting, and then, I don't know how many people have done and speak, but I'm sure there are a few. So, we're going to call the next 20 minutes free for all. Just raise your hand. Raise your, we're not going back to the days when Mark and Jack were on the board the first time. We won't do that, but just, anybody who wants to speak, just raise your hand, you'll be recognized, Jack.
I'll go ahead from, as the senior guy from this side, just like, although nobody's called me old yet tonight, but I do want to point out that Trish and I were both elected last century. Okay? Think about that for a minute. Last century, we got elected. But you know what? It's not too different today from what it was 20 years ago, sitting in the same kind of forum, because the same issues we talked about back then. And you know the first budget I came to with the school board? Can I have a minute, please? The first budget was that the school system's teacher salary scales didn't line up with years and steps. They were all askew, all over the board. There were plateaus and there were jumps and bumps, and we spent a tremendous amount of time and money to get it basically evened out linearly, and, because that's what people wanted, because it matched the federal pay scale at the time, in terms of process and procedure. And so, some people ended up getting a raise of over 20% that year, and it was significant. And it did cost us a lot of money to do that, but it solved a lot of the problems and basically, you know, things were very good for a while after that. And then, all of a sudden, things change, and, you know, the more things change, the more they stay the same, because we're faced with the same issues again. But I really believe that now is the right time to look at the salaries again, because if you look around what's happening across the nation, you know, 5% isn't a lot in some jurisdictions now. These teachers going on strike, and I agree with Duane, we don't want that to happen here. I mean, that, you know, and there's really no unions in Virginia, they say, but there's groups that act like them. And, you know, I was a member of the United Mine Workers Union, and they go on strike, and, you know, the families suffered for that, because of that, and it wasn't good for anybody. And so, I don't think that's a good thing to do, but I think having this kind of process and this open dialogue, and everybody has been very civil tonight about this, and that's good, because we're not blaming, you know, each other for this problem. We're all in this together, but we can solve it, and it's just a matter of what our priorities are, and that's the most important thing right now. So, keep that in mind, and, you know, I think we can get over the hump here. Thank you.
Any school board members?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Hasard. Thank you. So, I'll go kind of in a different direction. I think, as I said in my remarks, we both are dealing with growth. That's something we, as a community, are going to have to be dealing with, and I just wanted to throw out the idea that our CIP Advisory Committee has been talking about land banking or some kind of planning for future needs that we are going to have in this county. We know we're going to need them, and we need to know where we need them. I don't want to get into all the proffer stuff. I know that there's changes, but I do believe that a dialogue between our boards of what land do we have, is this land that we can use, and land banking to start thinking for the future. Because I, going through the redistricting process, I've really learned a lot about where we may have holes and different things, and I know you all have needs too for other places. And I just think maybe that beginning process, we keep talking about five-year plans and stuff, but we need to be planning not just for the growth of the people coming, but where are we going to be putting those facilities? Obviously, sitting on a school board, I have much interest in the schools, but I also have them for, do we need additional places for, you know, our sheriffs, maybe in the South? You know, just different things, and I just would love to see if, I'm not saying land bank is the way to do it, but I'm just wondering if we may need to be discussing that as boards, because we don't want to, we always have to, we seem to always have to take the land that we are given, which many times it may or may not be in the right place. And so, it's just something for us to think. I'm just throwing that out. I think our CIP Advisory Committee is going to be bringing something, at least talking about that, but I do think us as, at least the current elected officials, we need to start thinking in that way. So, I'm just throwing that out as an idea.
Anyone else from the board like to speak? Comment, question? Ms. Bonk?
So, it's been interesting listening to everybody and all the comments that everybody has. has. It's always very useful information, and I think that we do have a very good dialogue with the school board and our individual meeting members. I mean, I, Sarah and I talk all the time about different things. But, so, since we just got this presentation, I do have a few questions. So just for example, we just had a presentation, our first work session on our budget, and we looked at the social services workload of our own budget, because we made increases there last year based on workloads and how we compare to our comparative localities. So while I appreciate this particular slide, it tells me a story for Stafford County, but it doesn't tell me what's happening in your comparative counties. So, you know, you can, you can tell any kind of a story you want with numbers, but for me to make an educated decision, I would have a hard time telling my constituents. They would say, well, I remember Ty Shiver would say, "Well, what's the so what factor? So how does this compare to other localities?" I talk to our, some of my colleagues on the Prince William Board of Supervisors, and they say, "Well, we lose all of our teachers to Loudon and Fairfax," you know, "because of the cost to compete." So for me personally, I would love to have some more information on that slide and also on the licensed staff resignation. So this was what Stafford County looks like, but how do we compare to Spotsylvania and Prince William? You know, I hear stories that some go to Prince William to get the last three years of their, of their, before retirement, and then I also hear that some teachers go there and then they come back. The grass isn't always greener. But, so what do our resignations look like to your comparative counties that we use? And your counties might be different than the counties that we use. And what was the other one? So any kind of statistical things that you give us? The data doesn't mean a lot to me unless I can look at what's happening in your comparative counties. Then I feel it has weight, and I can go to my constituents and say, "Well, look where we stand," because that's how we made our decision on social services. We didn't know we were so far behind. We were grossly underfunding our departments and that department and the caseload workers. The caseload that the workers had was unbelievable, and we were losing people. And we are still going to continue to lose people, because that is a difficult department. But how do we compare to our locality? So I would like additional information there, but I do appreciate your presentation. It's very good, Sarah.
I just wanted to make a comment, Mrs. Bunkley. We'll be happy to request that data, but when we request data from our comparable jurisdictions, there is no obligation on them to provide it. And if they don't maintain that data, we put that together specifically for our purposes to know where we are. Perhaps they do the same thing. I don't know. But we'd be happy to, you know, to request that data and share it if it's available.
We might find that that data is in their presentation.
Yeah, that's true. So we will be requesting that, and I'm sure everyone is in the midst of their budget season as well, so we'll keep you posted on, you know, what their response is. I'm not sure they can, you know, get it to us immediately, but if they have it, I'm sure they'll share. They've been very good about sharing that data.
And I will say, there is an interesting document that is put together every year for the Washington area school systems, and it is very interesting. All the school systems in the sort of Northern Virginia/Washington/DC area agree on putting together this comparison document, and they have agreed on exactly how all of these things get calculated. And I know Ms. Young and I, when we learned about this, we thought it might be very interesting for the Fredericksburg area to have something like that. But I don't know, you know, it would require all of these jurisdictions to sort of agree. And you do find there's a little bit of territorialness, like we don't want to tell, you know, like somebody doesn't want to tell somebody else exactly what's going on, because we don't want you to get the edge on us or something like that. But it might be very interesting to pursue, trying to put something together like that. And that doesn't necessarily mean the Fredericksburg area is the market that we set in 2015, but it may be more meaningful in terms of where do employees go.
Right, right, and that would be helpful. And, I mean, also, Sarah and I had a conversation the other day, because I just said, "Hey, refresh my memory on some of the programs that you guys had, a program study that was done. Have you taken any action there? What are you thinking? Has there been any progress?" And that was on the IB program, the Commonwealth Governor's School program, and the, not VAS, APPX program, which I still don't understand. But, and you might want to just share, in your words, what you shared with me.
So, so we did receive, there were three reports done by our, I'm trying to remember the name of the subgroup, accountability and curriculum. Is that good enough? And they did three very comprehensive reports, and then we were given a presentation this past winter on that. And it was really interesting for me, because I had sort of thought of IB and CGS and APPX as all being, sort of serving the same purpose. And what came out in that report, or in that presentation, was really they're, they are all about trying to provide our students with opportunities to get an excellent education, but they aren't necessarily all targeting the same group of students. So CGS is very much, Commonwealth Governor's School is very much a program for students who've been identified or are identified as gifted. And that's defined, perhaps not in the way that many of us would like to see it defined, but it's defined as, you know, these students are testing in the top 5% or something along that line. But we have a lot of students who are interested in being academically challenged, and they can't get into the CGS program, because they don't test in the top 5%. And so the IB program provides that opportunity for many students. You don't have to be in the top 5% to get into that program and have the opportunity to receive some kind of challenge. But in that presentation, what became apparent to us is that perhaps the IB program is not really accessible to all our students. So for example, if I want to be in the IB program, I have to go to Mountain View or I have to go to Brookpoint. And if I don't have a way to get there, if my parents don't stay home, or if my parents don't work locally, then somebody has to provide transportation. And so I think what I came away with, and I think many of my fellow board members came away with, is these programs are important, but it's important that we modify them to give access to all our students who want challenge. And our goal is an excellent education. The other thing I would say about IB is it helps us with retention of teachers. Teachers want to be challenged. Teachers want to get trained to do better coursework. And the IB program gives these kinds of training opportunities. And once a teacher is trained in the IB curriculum, they don't just use it in IB. They use it out in the rest of their classes that they teach, when they're teaching classes that aren't IB classes. And so it's sort of an investment for all of our students. I mean, if you're a better teacher in an IB class, you become a better teacher in your other classes as well. And I'd like to end with, in responding to this, with just one other thing, which is I frequently hear people talk about, "What programs could you cut?" And there, we're, we're not actually required to provide, you know, baseball or football or any of those kinds of programs. And whenever anybody talks about cutting those programs, what I always hear from people is, "Well, but that's why they go to school. If you don't have those programs, these students don't want to go to school." Well, that means we're failing, okay? Our students should want to go to school, because the education is wonderful. And IB, that program, as well as Commonwealth Governor's School and APPX, those are challenging our students. Those are providing the reason that our students should go to school. So that's kind of what I got out of those three reports and those presentations. I hope I answered your question.
I think we're just about at the end. I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. I would ask that you police around your area. The only one question I have, and I haven't gone through this, obviously, page 10, line 2. Is that an error?
No, it's not. He's working.
Is that an error? Is that correct? I was trying to be discreet about it, Doctor. So everything is in there? Okay. I'm sorry? Yeah, we've got to buck out in four minutes. You've got four minutes. We got one more question, ladies and gentlemen? One more question. Ms. Young.
In the spirit of communication and collaboration, I just wanted to ask the question about community engagement. Is there an opportunity for shared services there? Well, I saw it in your, in your presentation, said the community engagement, and so I was wondering if there is an opportunity for us to be doing something?
Absolutely. Yeah, a lot of opportunities. We do far better when we work together, and we also are on similar messages. And, you know, quite frankly, Cherie is fantastic, and we've just kind of got caught up to where you guys have been for quite some time, and absolutely.
Yeah, so we could have the same message. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Healy.
I just wanted to thank you all for having us here and for making us feel welcome and part of the Stafford team, because we all are.
Yep.
And thank you, Mr. Snowings. I really appreciate your ideas for this format, and I would think it would be a good model to consider in the future. So thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Let's go down to the public hearing.